Rick, that little bit in the Baptist church, he's a friend of ours that's here in the city. He's gonna lead us into prayer and Tommy's gonna lead us into pledge allegiance when we stand here in the main. But Rick, would you remember HM Bottom Force and remember Ricky's mom, Joyce Barnes?
Yes.
We appreciate that. They need her heaven, they need her prayers. Do you understand?
I'd like just to share a quick scripture with you. Chris asked me to preach for a half hour, but I knew that it would probably be just a little bit too long. But it was an appropriate scripture for the work that you all do. We appreciate you. First in the chapter two, verse one. "I exhorte therefore that first of all supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and for all veteran authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all God-ness and honesty, where this is good and acceptable on the side of God, our Savior." Let's go a little word of prayer. Father, what a privilege it is to come to your throne of mercy and grace on behalf of the government of Russell Springs. I thank you, Lord, for our mayor and all of our councilmen, women, those who serve in all of the leadership roles within the government. Father, we pray especially tonight for Ricky's mother and for HM. Lord, we know that the COVID and many other illnesses have been very challenging for so many. Father, we just pray that you will comfort them, the families, and Lord, we sure to praise you for what's carrying over our special requests tonight. And Lord, we ask that you would just give our leaders a spirit of wisdom as they make the decisions to guide our community. We're so very blessed and we thank you, Lord, for all that they do. And we pray tonight, Lord, that you would give everyone a sense of peace as they go about taking care of business. I ask your blessings in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
If you would please, let's recite the pledge of allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. We appreciate it and thank you for coming. We call the Russell Springs City Council meeting October 14th, 2021 to order. First part, I need a roll call, Chris. See if we got a call.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Ms. Daniel?
Here.
Mr. Skaggs?
Yes.
Here.
Mr. Blakey?
Here.
Mary, you have a call.
Thank you, Chris. The next thing on agenda is the acceptance of minutes. Chris had sent them out in an email. Hope you've had time to run up, read over them. Need a, need a first, a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting.
Make a motion to accept the minutes?
I need a second.
Second.
Are there any discussion of the minutes? Anybody got any questions about them? No questions, you can do the roll call, Chris.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mary.
Thanks, Council. The next thing is acceptance of the casters firstment of financial statements. As he sent them out too, when he sent the minutes out, so I need a motion to pay the bills.
I make a motion that we pay our bills.
Second.
Got any discussion on it? Anybody got any question on any of the bills? Will we vote on them? No questions?
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mary.
Thanks again, Council. The next thing is old business. Has any of the council members got anything on old business that they'd like to bring up to the council now?
I'll make this quick, if you don't care, Mayor. I don't know if you'd call it old business though, but I had a lady stop me at the post office. And it's in reference to the festival. Would that be old business or is that just general information?
Yeah, yes. I'm gonna give a report on it after a while. Go ahead.
Well, I can wait if you say time.
No old business with new business. First thing is don't welcome Andrew. Andrew, thanks for coming back. Appreciate you. We met briefly. And you've been in with Chris a lot, talked to him, presented our audit to us, to the council, to the public.
Thank you.
Andrew, the floor is yours, my friend.
Well, thank you. Yeah, this is our first year doing your all's audit. I'm with Ray Foley, Hensley, or RFH, and we're out of Lexington. This little letter that's just to the council. I made it just in time getting out of Lexington with traffic, so. So we do a lot of cities around the state, from northern Kentucky to eastern Kentucky. Pretty much everywhere. So I'm here to present your June 30th, 2020 audit. As you know, 2020 was kind of the rough year. So it's been a slow process getting a lot of audits done. I feel like we're still digging out the hole of a lot of stuff. But I'll cover this letter here. I kind of cut, call it our catch-all letter. It's just to the council, to communicate anything additional that we want to communicate to you all outside of the audit report. There's certain things that we have to report on in here, like if there are any new accounting policies adopted, any material adjustments. There's a listing of adjustments in the back. We just went ahead and listed them all, which is typically what we'll do. If we had any difficulties working with city staff, getting information or just any difficulties in general, we can mention them here. So I really appreciate, it's always a struggle getting, getting first year in with, with a new client. So I appreciate Chris and Wanda and everybody in the staff being cooperative and making this transition. We have two things additional in here. Just, we, I kind of look at this and I know my partners and everybody in our firm. When we do an audit, we try to help you all, not only just give you an opinion on your financial statements to help you all kind of improve your financial reporting, keep it up with compliance, things like that. So we'll give you recommendations. We've given Chris recommendations just verbally throughout our process. But there's two things in here on the second page in this letter. It looked like the city was charging penalties on some of the utility bills. The executive order that the governor passed, those were supposed to be stopped. Disconnects were properly stopped, but it did look like there were some late penalties that had been charged on the two months. Additionally, we mentioned at the bottom there, the signature stamp. We think it would be best practice to discontinue the signature stamp or that the mayor has, or if he does continue to use it, just to keep it on hand. I personally wouldn't want somebody with my signature stamp, but it's just a precautionary, best practice not to have that or to use appropriately, so. And I think they were very receptive in our mentioning of that. So like I said, we're just trying to ensure proper procedures are being followed here, so. With that being said, I'll jump into the audit report. If you'll flip about two pages in, you'll see a page with our letterhead on it. And with independent auditors reporting. Here, I always like to point out, this does a good job of breaking down the audit, these financial statements and the audit itself. These financial statements are the city's financial statements. We helped you all put together this 50-some pages here. But they're the city's, the management's financial statements. Our job is to report back to the council and to be able to give you all an opinion on those. So our opinions down at the bottom there, we believe the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. So that would be considered a unmodified opinion. It's a, a lot of people like to call it a clean audit opinion, it's the best we can give you. So the second page kind of covers some of the other information that's in the audit report after the basic financial statements. But nothing that really surprising there. It's just kind of saying, it's incorporated in the audit, basically what I like to say it's saying there. So I'm gonna flip to page, let's see here, page eight? This is the city's statement of net position. Basically, it's your balance sheet. You have your assets, your liabilities, and your equity. So you'll see there, and that, you gotta imagine, this is June 30th, 2020. Cash in the governmental activities, which is your road fund, general fund, and drug forfeiture fund was $1,047,000. That is mostly in the general fund. And then you have a large balance of receivables as well. One thing that occurred was you had a lot of CARES funding that came through. It didn't come in until fiscal year '21, but that got accrued because you used expenses from the previous year as well as some additional road funds. So when we look at the income statement on the general fund, you'll see that that looks pretty good because of that. On the utility side, you have $591,000 in unrestricted cash, so nice cash balances there. We'll look at some of these other assets and liabilities. I'll point them out here later. Chris warned me not to talk too much about the pension liability. That's just an estimate that's on your financial statements. Really, to me, I think it makes it overly complicated. Everybody knows the pension system's kind of been, had its difficulties. It needs additional funding. So that's not a number we come up with. It's not a number he comes up with. The state gives us that number. The one thing that, that I'd like to tell you all is just look at the forecast that the state's giving you on what those pension contributions are gonna be. Dollar for, for each dollar that you spend on payroll as you look forward and your hiring practices, your wages, stuff like that. Because it can add up if you have, end up hiring a lot of people or, or if those contribution rates are starting to go up. I'll go to page 11 here. This is your, essentially your income statement for your governmental funds. You have your revenues and your expenditures. The total change in your fund balance for the general fund was a net change of $14,000. So in the grand scheme of things, that was pretty much break even based on the dollars that you all are dealing with here in the general fund. As I mentioned, there was a lot of additional funds through the CARES funding and the additional road funds. The road fund, that kind of just depends on your expenditures over the course of the year. You have $48,000 coming in. You spent $34,000 on road improvements, and then you see your drug forfeiture fund there. Page 13. This is your proprietary funds, your water and sewer fund, and then your senior citizen fund. Here, you will see you had a decrease in your net position of $227,000 in the water and sewer fund. There's different basis of accounting. Governmental accounting is very complex and overly complex to try to understand sometimes. But this includes depreciation, so some of that's non-cash flow expense. 300, oh, depreciation. Just saw it when I looked up. $476,000. Take that out and you're positive, so. And then on your senior citizen fund, that was the same thing there. That would have been close to break even if you wouldn't have had the depreciation in there. So overall, I think as of June 30th, 2020, the city was in pretty good standings in both funds, the main funds. Does anybody have any questions? I'll point out a few things in the notes. I know there's a lot in here, so. The notes kind of cover all of the accounting policies and, and just elaborate on some of the detail on here. On page 21, this details your capital assets, what the city purchased in new assets. Quite a bit was purchased in fiscal year '20, over half million dollars in new capital assets in the governmental funds. And then about $52,000 in the water and sewer. But that gives you a good breakdown on what all of you all invested in. On page 22, right there in the middle, you'll see a change. This is your governmental long-term debt. The city began drawing on the police building note. $169,000 was drawn on that. So you have that note, and then you also have the fire truck payable. So those are your two notes that you're paying on out of the general fund. This gives details on the maturities of those notes, so you guys can see in planning when those notes are gonna come due. On the next page, on page 23, you had, you had some new revenue bonds. You refinanced basically some, some of your old revenue bonds. So no real new debt was incurred in, in the water and sewer fund. And again, above that, you'll see the maturities of those. There's a lot more in here. A lot of stuff's on the pension. All I can say is the city did make 100% of the retired required contributions, and there's a schedule in here that shows that. Yep, the last thing I wanted to touch on was the last, let's see here, it's page 47. It's towards the back. There's about four pages in the back. You'll see our letterhead again on it. This is a required reporting on internal control over financial reporting and compliance. So we did note one, material weakness in internal control over financial reporting. We did not have any compliance findings, so that's good. Last year or the year before this, you had, I think, four, five of them, so internal control funding. So I think that improvements have been made. They're trying to make them. The one thing that we suggested here on page 49, and just to improve segregation of duties, is it protects employees by having good segregation of duties, and it just strengthens your overall controls. Is that whoever is preparing the checks, they should not be a check signer on those checks. That way, if somebody's the one processing them, you have the two people that are signing them, not be the, the actual one processing them. So, or it had the capability of processing them, so. That's something we suggested. We wanted to give you all direct recommendations so you can make those corrections and then hopefully we can move on. But, but we'll always look for recommendations for you all. That way, just to strengthen your controls, so. Does anybody have any questions for me? I'm always open if, you guys, there's, like I said, there's a lot of stuff in here. If you have questions, after you get, look to looking at this, I'm sure Chris can give you my number or just look me up. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Overall, I think it's a good report. Definitely an improvement on the prior year.
Anybody got any questions, friend Andrew? We do appreciate you.
Well, thank you all. Look forward to working with you here next year. Hopefully we'll get started here soon. I'll leave you with this one, Chris.
Hey, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
If there's anything that we want to know personally, can we call you up and find that out pertaining to this?
Pertaining to this? Yes, sir.
Anytime?
Yeah. Yeah, I want to, we want it to be an open communication with you all, because you all do hire us as your auditors.
Thanks.
And as part of, I mean, we've reached out to folks across the organization, make sure we cover, make sure we don't, there's nothing unusual going on that we should be aware of, so it's kind of our job to be aware of things, so.
We appreciate you. Look forward to seeing you again, Andrew.
All right, I'm gonna hit the road, so.
Be safe. Thank you. I need a motion. I need a motion to accept the audit.
I make a motion that we accept the audit.
In a second.
I see.
Just to let the council know, only reason we changed audit companies, it wasn't, did the other, did anything wrong or nothing like that? It was just KLC asked us to change every five and six years. We had the same audit company for 20-some years. So they asked us, said you get a new audit company, they look at different things. So we just felt like it'd be transparent. We'd get a new audit company, let them do the auditing, anything. So we found out it was good, but the last company, we're good with this company, so it's all good. So I need a roll call, Chris.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
And Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mary.
Thank you, Council. The next thing on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance 2021-04. It's ordinance to accept Hammer Drive in the city limits of Russell Springs. That's sponsored by Councilman Barnes, and we'll have a second reading on it and a vote on it tonight.
I've got to read this. Says Commonwealth Kentucky City of Russell Springs ordinance number 2021-04. An orson accepts of Hammer Drive as the city street of Russell Springs, Kentucky. Being ordained by the city of Russell Springs, Kentucky, city council as follows. Whereas the city of Russell Springs, Kentucky, known as the city hereafter, as number one, determined that the area here, here and after described as subject property is desirable to be accepted as, as a dedicated and fee simple city street named Hammer Drive. The same as being in an incorporated area accurately described and accurately depicted on a description and depiction prepared by Kentucky licensed professional land surveyor, Robert L. Smith, PLS 3897, which documents are respectfully attached here too and incorporated herein as exhibit A and exhibit B. Number two, the subject property, prior to the dedication, acceptance of documented herein, was owned and fee simple by Brad and Florence Vaughn, husband and wife, known as the Vaughns, as a portion of real property more particularly described in deed book 342, page 240, platte cabinet three, slide 1016, in the office of the county clerk of Russell County, Kentucky. The Vaughns or their successors and interests have submitted and recorded or, recorded or reportable instrument dedicating the subject property and fee simple to the city and the copies of such instrument are in possession of the administrator of the city of Russell Springs Planning and Zoning and with the city clerk. The acceptance of dedication reflected in this ordinance is conditioned on an original of such instrument of dedication being recorded in the office of Russell County, Kentucky clerk prior to the second reading on this ordinance. Number three, the subject, the subject property shall, from the publication of this ordinance forward, be a public street of the city connecting Mill Road and Bernard Lane and encompasses a 40-foot wide right of way. Number four, any signage in the subject property shall comply with the ordinance of the city and any other applicable law. No signage or monuments may be placed in the subject property without the prior written approval of the city. Number five, the subject property shall be maintained by the city consistent with any ordinances of the city or any applicable law governing street maintenance. Number six, all future utilities installations in the subject property shall be subject to advance by approval of the city and prior submission of an as-built drawings to the city. Any such utility installation shall be in compliance with the city's, with the ordinances of the city consistent with any subdivision class and adjoining property and other applicable law. Number seven, any, all future encroachment for ingress or, ingress or egress on the subject property shall be subject to advance approval by the city and prior submission of the as-built drawings to said city. Any such encro, encroachment shall be in compliance with the ordinances of the city and any applicable law. Number eight, the subject property has been previously approved as meetings all required of the city system by the Russell Springs Planning and Zoning Board at a regular meeting, July 1st, 2021, with minutes, such being having been approved. Number nine, any inspections to be taken on behalf of the city of the subject property has been completed without objection from any employee or agent of the city. Number 10, now therefore it be ordained by the city of Russell Springs, Kentucky, as follows. The city of Russell Springs, Kentucky, thus hereby accept as dedicated and fee simple a city street named Hammer Drive referenced above as the subject property and be described and depicted as referenced above. Number 11, the ordinance and the various parts therefore are hereby declared to be severable. If any section clause, sentence, or phrase of this ordinance is held to be invalid or unconstitutional by any court competent jurisdiction, then said wholly shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or a portion thereof other than the sections so declared by, to be unconstitutional or invalid. Number 12, all employees, officials, agents, and attorneys of the city shall timely endeavor and incorporate to effect this ordinance on its passage on second reading, taking steps to facilitate Hammer Drive being identified on appropriate city or other governmental maps. Number 13, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon publication. This ordinance being posted in summary form in compliance with the applicable law, all warrants or parts of ordinances and conflict whereas are hereby repealed. First reading, and our last, and second reading of today's date publication will be next week. Signed by Eddie Thomas Mayer, date attested by Christopher Ramsey, city clerk, and date. And legal prescription would be A and a platte would be exhibit B. And that is your second reading of ordinance 2021-04.
Need a motion to accept Hammer Drive in the city limits?
I like that motion.
The first, you need a second.
I'll second it.
You got any discussion on it? Anybody want to talk about it?
Where's it coming out? Right there behind Cane Mark, um, Bernard's?
Have you been over there?
No, no.
Was that all that out? Cleaned that up?
No, I ain't been through there.
Looks nice.
Mr. Skaggs?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blakey?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mary.
The next thing on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance 2021-05. It's ordinance limiting the annual lower impact of real property, motor vehicles, and motor boats. That's sponsored by council lady Sherri Daniels. We'll have a second reading on it tonight, and Chris has added a little bit to that.
I'll just do a summary, because we had the first reading in its entirety for ordinance 2021-05. That's an ordinance limiting the annual ad valorem tax on real property, motor vehicles, and motor boats and other personal property for city purposes in the corporate limits of the city of Russell Springs for the year of 2021. Vehicle tax stays the same at .1700 cents per $100. Real property will stay the same at .1630 cents per $100. And other personal property will stay the same as last year, .163 cents per $100. The only thing that's changed in the second reading from the first reading is section six, which was put in by, says the city shall not mail out a property tax bill that has an amount due of $5 or less. And that was the only change from the first reading.
Need a motion to... Need a motion to accept the ad lower tax 2021-05.
I'll make a motion.
Or I'll second it.
Got any discussion on it?
Yeah, look, I just don't, I just glad I was able to keep that tax the same.
How long has it been keeping the same?
Yeah.
They've not been raised in 20 years.
Wow.
That's good.
That is good, especially nowadays.
Of course, as property values go up, we're still getting a little bit more money, but that is good.
But yeah, but they haven't been reassessed for a while, you know.
Depends on who you're buying or selling.
That's exactly right.
What's that, Dave?
Depends on who you're buying or selling.
Well, that's true, too.
I need a roll call, Chris.
Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carries, ma'am.
Thank you, Chris. Next thing on the agenda is Russell County Tourism. We got Ms. Jeanette Marson here with us today, executive director. I thought she could give you all the hands down. Flow is yours, Ms. Jeanette.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna put this extra copy of your audit over here and what if you all can pick it up later, if that's okay? I'm not gonna take up a big, long time. This is the Reader's Digest version of tourism in Russell County. And I tried to drill down to Russell Springs, but I always like to come and just remind you how hard I'm working for you for the city of Russell Springs. Of course, our tourism office is right around the corner. Because we have those big brown signs on the Cumberland Parkway, people by the throes are coming into the office looking for where to eat, and Main Street is so easy to get to. So I'm sending them your way all the time. Anyway, this'll hand out, the first one on top, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing. That part at the bottom, the total visitor spending in 2019, the economic impact of visitors coming to, and this is people fifty miles amount that come in to our county, was 45.75 million. During our COVID year, of course, we're still have problems with illness now still, but 2020 was a rough year. Not as bad as I thought it'd be, 44.2 million. It was good to be small. It's good to have a lot of outdoor adventure. People were avoiding the large cities. Louisville and Lexington were decimated. The tourism was almost non-existent. People came here to Russell County and spent their money, which is really exciting. That second sheet, I tried to make it more Russell Springs pertinent for you. Of course, when I think of Russell Springs, I think probably a little farther outside the city limits, but Russell Springs, so I'm speaking of Russell Springs as a whole. In Russell County, we have right now currently 450 available hotel rooms, Airbnbs, VRBOs, and out of those, 185, I was counting them up today, are Russell Springs. With, and I put 20 additional, there is one investor that is building Sagendi in Russell Springs, not in the city limits, but outside, but still Russell Springs. And you all are exploding with lodging as far, and you know, of course, I still would love to have a brand name hotel. That's okay, we don't have it. Some of these are $700 a night. There's one person that wanted $1,200 a night for their Airbnb right here in Russell Springs. And they're getting it, which is amazing, amazing. The, our website, lakecumberlandvacation.com, if you've never been on it, I encourage you to go on. Russell Springs has so many listings. Every, you know, when your cloth store down the, you know, street here opened up, I was right there taking photos, putting them on lakecumberlandvacation.com, putting them on the state website. Just about everything you've got, if I, the second I know about it, we're promoting it. Of course, the lake is our big hook, but once they get here, we want them to eat. We want them to shop at Kroger and all the other grocery stores. We want them to buy our gas. They want, we want them to flood our county and Russell Springs with outside money. And on the website, I was really excited to see about 30,000 people on our website every month. Some of the large cities that surround larger cities have about 2,000 visitors to their website every month. So little tiny Russell County, Russell Springs, we're doing pretty well as far as visitors looking on our website. On social media, we have a very mighty social media, over 161,000 followers, at least on Facebook. Many of my posts, well, not many, several, a few of my posts reach millions of people. I'll look to see, you know, on the analytics and it say, it'll say 2 million, 3 million people have seen this post. So that's very exciting. Your businesses here in Russell Springs, they call me, say, hey, can you come down and do a video? And absolutely we can. We promote the Star Theater all the time. And speaking of the Star Theater, I have to do a shout out to the share, to the police department of Russell Springs. When, when the state of Kentucky was wanting to shoot the Star Theater, you all were fabulous for stopping traffic and letting them get the shots that they needed to get of the Star Theater. And those will be promoted across the state as well. Thousands of travelers come into our tourism office, as I mentioned, and that's thanks to those signs on the Cumberland Parkway. Some big news, we are working on an app. A lot of places don't like to hand out paper right now, just due to COVID and concerns. So Russell County and 10 counties surrounding us pooled our money to do an app. Russell Springs on that app has so many listings. I don't, I'm almost thinking even more than Somerset. So when they, when it's finished, and it's almost finished, it's being reviewed by Google and Apple, people will download the app, they'll be able to see how far am I from a Kroger store? How far am I from a gas station? How far am I from, anyway? So it'll be exciting to be used, where's the lodging, where, you know, anyway, so that's exciting. When that is finished, I'll let you know, hopefully you all will use it as well. This is just interesting information. As I said, Lake Cumberland is our hook, three people here. I just did a little bit of research to see, I, we know, you always hear 4 million people come to Lake Cumberland. Of course, Russell County has three fourths of the lake, most of the lake, I'll say. So I always like to, like, say, most of those 4 million are ours. But just in comparison with Yellowstone National Park, Mammoth Cave, and this is in the millions, for, you know, anyway. So as you see those numbers, it's millions. Mammoth Cave, Mount Rushmore, Rocky Mountain National Park. We are, we are very amazing to have that many visitors come to our area. And then, let's see, what else? It was interesting, well, I'll get to the vote, votes in a second, but this next paper is about the documented votes. I got this from Tim Popwell. And you can kind of see how the documented votes affect the school, county hospital, ambulance, library, except, of course, this is county. And it's interesting that Tim Popwell said he's only collecting one fourth, one quarter of those taxes. Now, and I asked him, so are the documented votes in Russell County, are they from here or are they outside people? He said almost all of them are out of state votes. Of course, Russell County folks have votes as well, but most of them are out of state taxes. So anyway, you can see how those taxes affect all these wonderful things, our school and county. There is a legislation that is supposed to be brought up where they would be able to, where the PBAs would be able to collect all of it. I think if you have a vote, and it's already a law, you have to document your vote. You already have to pay tax, although not very many people do. But if they pass the legislation, it'll be more votes collected from, but the boat owners would pay less. But it would be good for all. And then, just a little bit of information. So what we do in the tourism office, of course, my main job is to bring outside people into Russell County as a whole and get them to spend their money. And with the dollars that we spend, we do a lot of national advertising, a lot of international advertising. And in 2020, I didn't do very much. In fact, I had a lot of advertising planned, and I canceled all of it because you can't be telling people to come travel when you're not supposed to go out of your, out of your house. So 2021 is a different, is a different story. I did some ads in, in the fall, in the lane report. There's a lot of Kentucky people that are wanting to travel inside our own state. They might have canceled their Florida trips, even still, their trip to Maine or whatever, but they want to travel in Kentucky. So doing a little bit more Kentucky ads. Lot of digital advertising. I worked on a collaborative effort with the Dance Shop, and we're gonna be doing some TV commercials. I try and promote them as much as possible, just because they're fabulous and they were fabulous to work with. But coming soon, hopefully you'll see some TV commercials. We've been, a lot of people from Louisville and Lexington, so we'll aim for that, those TV markets as well. Half-page ad in the Kentucky State Visitor Guide. And then national advertising in Women's Day, Country Living, Better Homes. We were talking earlier about Chicago. I think Jeremy was mentioning, a lot of people are coming from Chicago. I'm noticing that as well. So doing a half-page ad in Chicago monthly, Indianapolis monthly, and in the spring, additional digital, digital ads. But I just always like to remind you, you know, how hard we're working, and you guys are rocking it with Russell, Russell Springs. Jeremy, you're doing wonderful, bringing in businesses. I always bothered him, so what's going on, what's going on, what's going on? And I think we need to make KFC an attraction, because you should see the people lined up watching that construction. That's kind of exciting. We do, last thing, I didn't do a visitor guide last year. We cut costs. I had the lights off, the air off, the heat off, everything. We didn't do a visitor guide, but I'm working on one now. It'll be much fuller. But we do 40,000 of these. We also have them for download on our website, and thousands of people download these as well. Anyway, and I think last, well, not very long ago, in the summer, we were mailing out over 8,000 a week to people who want to come travel. So anyway, hopefully 2021, 2022 will be a bumper year again. But anyway, do you, anybody have any questions or?
Just a comment.
Yes.
I'm sure you remember, because I remember very clearly when you were hiring.
Oh, and you were on the hiring committee, and I owe my job to this gang, let me tell you.
Well, no, you owe it to your dynamic personality and the energy that you have. But before you say 161,000 followers on Facebook, I remember when we first started this, it was like 200. We could get 200. We'd get 500 next month. We, you know, I mean, this is just, and how many years has that been?
I, I've been here eight years, eight years now.
Look at that.
Yeah.
And how many, you sent out 200, 200 maybe?
Yeah.
When you first started? I mean, it is, it's remarkable.
I appreciate that. And it's not just Lake Cumberland. We're doing something right, because other, other cities, other larger cities are not mailing out as many. They're not, anyway, so I think, I think what we're doing, all of us, well.
We appreciate your efforts.
Oh, thank you. Well, I don't do it alone, when I, you know, I know who to call and to help out. It's all, you know, it takes a village.
We're all together.
We are all together, let me tell you.
I don't think a lot of people know how important her job is to this county. We've had dealings before on two different businesses of mine, and she goes, hits the ground running, wide open. So I appreciate everything you've ever done and continue to do, and I'm very proud that you're in this position that you're in. Because I think that's why we're, we're, we're inspiring, spiraling upward. So thank you so much, Jeanette. We appreciate it.
Maybe I was trying to do something right then.
Oh, yeah, she's definitely doing something right.
So I've got a good board, and like I said, it's not just me. It is, it is a village of people. And we have a phenomenal city, county that work with me. And if we didn't have that, I wouldn't be able to do what, you know, we do. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next thing on the agenda is executive session under KRS 61.810. This discussion regarding purchasing property or the sale of property. Need a motion to go in?
I move that we go into executive session under KRS 61.8101B for the purchase of or sale of real property by a public agency when publicity would likely affect the value of the property.
Got a motion, Sherri? I need a second.
Second.
Team of Congress, we will be going into executive session at, oh, I need a, I guess.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes? Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs?
Yeah.
646.
So we will be going into executive session at 646. Perhaps not know how long it'll last. I hope it ain't long, but we session at 7:37. There was no action that was taken, and no action can be taken in executive session.
I move that we exit executive session under KRS 61.810. Section B, for purchase or sale of real property by a public agency when publicity would likely affect the value of the property.
I second.
Thank you, Larry. Got a motion, but second by Tammy, or by?
Larry.
Larry.
My Tammy.
Mr. Larry?
No, it's Larry.
Give me a roll call.
Mr. Skaggs?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Motion carries. So 7:38.
Anything else from the council?
Number two.
Number two.
Oh, I move that we give Mayor Thomas the authority to investigate and negotiate the sale of the property discussed in executive session with final approval of the city council.
Got a motion, but Sherri, you need a second.
I'll second that.
Second, but Tom, you need a roll call, Chris.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Motion carries, ma'am.
I make a motion that we give Mayor Thomas the authority to negotiate and sign a contract to sell timber on property owned by the city of Russell Springs.
I second.
Larry, got a motion, got a second for Sherri. Need a roll call.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Motion carries, ma'am.
All righty, thank you, counsel. Before I give a mayor's update, I want to.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
I move that we give Mayor Thomas the authority to negotiate the property and to sign a letter of intent to purchase the property discussed in the executive, executive session with final approval of the city council.
Tammy, you got a motion, but Tammy, you need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second, but we, you're roll call, Chris.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
And Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Motion carries, ma'am.
Thank you, counsel. Before I get to the mayor's, are there any things, Larry, you had?
Yeah, this lady approached me and, and to me, if it's something that's important to a citizen, it's important to me. And she was talking about the festival, nothing negative about the festival itself, but she said she didn't have, and she needed a handicap parking place, and there was none, and I, it's probably an oversight on somebody's part, I don't know.
Was you there?
I wasn't there, I was out of town.
We had handicap, uh.
Well, where was it at?
It was when you come in, you went to the right, and there's a handicap sign there. We put up.
Well, she probably didn't see then, I don't know.
You told them there, when you stopped, you had to stop, and they motioned you on. If you told them you's handicapped, they sent you to the right and went up the hill, and then Rick Godby come and got you on tow, Joe Godby. He run nothing but handicap, Rick did.
Well, apparently she didn't see that then, I don't know.
No, we had, we had, we had several handicaps.
And then the second thing she brought to my attention, and she went ahead when she didn't see the handicap. She didn't see it, or wasn't told, whatever the case was. I don't know what the whole story was. She was exiting, and somebody in one of the city trucks blocked the road, and she asked. asked them to move or something, and they were extremely rude. I would ask that our employees, and most of them are, for the most part, not, not be rude, even if it's something that irks a snot out of you, but I promised her I would bring it up in front of the council, and so that's what I'm doing. Okay?
To get back to your first thing, she could have just waited, and somebody would have picked her up because of me, Jeremy, I worked over there all night, Friday night, Saturday night hauling with my gator, with a wagon, with straw on it, hauling people back and forth, all that.
Well, and, and I'm not saying it, see, I was out of town, I didn't know, but anyway.
So that means you're volunteering next year to drive one, right?
It's fun, I did it last year.
I never had driven one, I don't know nobody riding, me or not.
But anyway, that, that's all I have.
Thanks, Larry. Anybody asking anything? Anybody sign in to speak?
I know there's nothing I say.
Okay. Uh, when I get to the mayor's report here, I need to see, has the police got a, Tammy, you got a report for me on anything?
Just, I'm sure a lot of people's not, it's been discussed a year or so ago, we've started parking some of the vehicles that is, is not being currently used right now, out here in front of the post office, different parts of Main Street, different biddies throughout the town, just as a deterrent for people to slow down.
Great idea, I seen it on Main Street.
I've been noticing too.
Love it, yeah. Farm store in Berwick.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't, they don't drag strip down there.
Well, that's the whole, I want to get the point across, so I haven't read citations, that's why.
I think I waved that car for two, three.
I did too. I think we ought to put a dash camera on it with a radar gun.
Jeremy, economic development, you got anything?
All I'd like to let people know that we are working really hard right now, there's some, so a lot of people we're talking to feeling a lot of positivity, don't know, we're that elite or some elite anywhere, but we will let you know we are in it pretty hard. And from an ABC standpoint, Chief Pierce reached out to me a couple of weeks ago about the checkpoints, and he and I's been working, we're trying to get some stuff in place to do some sobriety checkpoints, so, a lot of things working.
Thank you, Jeremy. Next thing, the clerk's report, I've asked, I've had a lot of people asking about H.M., and I've asked Chris to give us an update on H.M.
Okay, before I say that, I just want to say thanks to the council for working with me on this past audit, with it being a clean audit, I appreciate y'all helping me and answering the questions of the auditor, and that means a lot to me that, that y'all have been doing that and standing beside me on that process. As far as H.M. goes, his family has said he is holding his own in this body against COVID, but he is asking for, the family's asking for a lot of prayers, they, they need it. As you know, he's been in the ICU for two weeks now, so if you could, please continue and look up H.M. and his family and your prayers.
And as I get into the mayor's report, just want to let everybody know, and Sherri likes it, and she's had some people contact, and maybe the council has, the Russell Springs signage, it's out by the bypass, we took it down, they have put it in storage right now, and we will be putting that back up with a brand-new flag and a brand-new flag pole. That should be going up probably within the next month. They're bringing in tops all over now, they're gonna bring in topsoil, and they're gonna spread it all out, and they're gonna straw it, seed it, and all that, then after that, they're gonna put our, they're gonna put our signs back up, the development will be done, and we'll have our signs back up. We've got all the POW and everything else, all them flags that store, so we're gonna put it back just like it was. So.
Thank you.
Except we will put a bigger flag, so, for the American flag. The next thing is the report on the Fall Festival. I think it went good, like Larry said, and I want to mention that I want to thank Spark and the Russell County Rescue Squad. Russell County Rescue Squad helped us park cars and helped us haul people, and then Spark, Alex Wiegams and Scott Wells is guys down here, there's eight of them come up one night, seven of them come up the next night, they helped us park cars, they wore the safety vests, and they guided cars all the way around, and helped us keep the parking in good shape, so I just want to thank them and let them know we appreciate them working with the community because they don't have to do that, but they did. Then the next thing is the trunk or treat, October 30th. If you want this, Zach, or one of y'all want this to take with you, you can add it, and we've got a few more if you want it, we're gonna have trunk or treat on Main Street. The spots is filling up pretty quick out here, so if you want one, you need to call up here at City Hall and talk to Chris, 270-866-3981, extension six, if you want some spots on Main Street, because we're gonna, a lot of this year, we're gonna do a little bit different. We got the merchants involved with us, we're trying to tie the merchants back in with this stuff, so we're gonna show them how much we care about them, so they're gonna be working with us this year, so don't forget that. It's October 30th, 5 to 7, right here on Main Street. I want to give Nick a shout out, they're doing trunk or treat on the Squire from 5 to 7, so bring them here, take them to Jamestown, or go Jamestown first, come here, let's work together. Then the next thing is the KFC update. I guess y'all seen Long John's down, it's tore down, they've tore down, got it up, they're gonna start pouring concrete next week for the new Long John's. It was two weeks behind, he, he let me and Jeremy know when we was out there the day, that they took two extra weeks to get a demolition permit, so he said that he wants to be selling chicken by January 1, that's his goal, so just let you know on that, if anybody asks.